Good evening, everyone. We will call the December 2 City Council meeting to order. First order of business is the roll call. Heidi.
Estes. Peterson. Lewis. Doyle. Wright. Scott. Nordstrom. Roberts. Clayton. Laurenti. We have a corner.
And now we will recognize Roger Gallimore from the YMCA for invocation. You're welcome to participate, but not required.
Oh, Lord. Having just celebrated Thanksgiving, we continue to give thanks. We give thanks for this community. We give thanks for the free political process. We give thanks for the service of these men and women as elected officials. And we give thanks to you, oh, Lord, for all these things and more. And humbly ask that you would bless this meeting and grant wisdom in all the deliberations before them. And we ask these things in Christ. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Roger. We're now on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Scott, second by Clayton. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're now on to Citizen of the Month. And if Allen and Anita Kleinsaucer could join us down front along with our two, Ward Two Aldermen.
The December 2013 Citizen of the Month Award is honoring an individual who has exemplified great public service to our community. We are pleased to present this award to Rapid City Ward Two resident, Al Kleinsaucer. And before I proceed further, I want to talk for a moment about this book. Several years ago, Al provided me a, it was in 2010, he provided a copy of this book that he wrote to my wife and I. And the title of the book is Fifty Years of Family Memories, 1957 to 2007. And it says, where he autographed it, it says, "To Sam and Jennifer, family is where my story begins." And it pretty much says it all about you and about your character and how important family is in your life. And it's an honor to have you here tonight to present this award to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Allen was born in central North Dakota and grew up on his parents' farm and experienced the ranch life in the 30s, 40s, and 50s. He worked on the railroad as a young lad of 18 in 1953 for the Great Northern Railway in Minot, North Dakota. He found the girl of his dreams, whom he married on May 19, 1957. After years of working construction, airbase, and interstate road projects, Allen was hired with the City of Rapid City Water Division in December 1961. He settled down, sort of, in Rapid City with his wife and children. During his time with the Water Division, Allen was instrumental in creating a union for the Rapid City Public Works employees. The American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees ASME Union was established at the city in 1971 and is still representing the city employees to this day. Allen retired from the City of Rapid City on July 1, 1994, after 33 years of service to the Water Division. Since retirement, Allen has written two books about his adventurous life. The first, titled Dakota Jack, was written from memoirs of growing up on his parents' farm in North Dakota. His second book was based on nearly 50 years of memories of marriage and life in Rapid City. Allen and his wife became members of St. Paul's Lutheran Church in 1963, and they served various positions in the church throughout the years. He also spends his retirement days working part-time at his son's truck and car wash. Thank you, Allen, for your dedication and community service to the citizens of Rapid City. We are proud that you are a member of our community.
And now the proclamation. Whereas the City of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual who has exemplified great public service to the community. And whereas the December Citizen of the Month is awarded to Allen Kleinsaucer, a Rapid City and Ward Two resident. And whereas recognizing Allen's past enthusiastic work ethic with the City of Rapid and his involvement throughout the community. And whereas Allen's commitment to help others shows true passion to the Rapid City community. Now therefore we, Alderman Richie Nordstrom and Alderman Steve Laurenti of Rapid City, South Dakota, on behalf of Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim Allen Kleinsaucer as the December 2013 Citizen of the Month recipient in recognition of his innovation and leadership and the contributions he has made to our community. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Richie for nominating me, first of all, and for the city for having a program like this to recognize normal, everyday citizens to get an award like this. Also, I got to give thanks to my wife of 57 years of marriage. She used to rock on my foundation here, and that's mainly what I based the book on, and my family. Speaking of public service, between Nita and myself and our son, we put in 65 years of public service in Rapid City. I don't know if it's a record or not, but it must be close. And I'd also like to thank the mayor and the council for the job that they're doing in protecting our citizens and having their best interests at heart. And you guys are doing a good job, I think. Thanks a lot.
Chief Mike, are we doing the presentation tonight? We'll now recognize Chief Mike Malteverne from our Fire Department. Along with Sergeants Wayrick and Robertson from the National Guard. And of course, Al Johnson, who's receiving the award.
Before we begin, just the reason why we came here is to first recognize excellence. And in the military, as tradition has it, we have an opportunity to do that when people go above and beyond what they're called to do. And I'm the commander of the 82nd Civil Support Team. It's a WMD response team here in Rapid City. With me is Sergeant Robertson, Staff Sergeant Robertson, who assisted in the planning of this evening. So I want to first thank Mayor Quaker for allowing this to happen and all the council members for allowing this presentation tonight. We have a special thanks to one of our very own. We have a great opportunity to work with both the fire and police and emergency managers of this great city. And within that, we've got among us one of the best. And with that, we want to recognize him tonight for the work that he's done. I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Robertson. He's got a little write-up that came from me. And then I've also got a last-minute presentation. Sergeant Robertson.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, distinguished guests, visitors, and family, thank you for this opportunity for us to be able to recognize one of Rapid City's finest. From the commander, letter of appreciation, Allen Johnson, paramedic firefighter, Rapid City Fire Department. On behalf of the 82nd Weapons of Mass Destruction Civil Support Team, I would like to take this time to express my personal appreciation for paramedic firefighter Johnson's untiring efforts in support of joint and interagency training. Paramedic Johnson's desire for quality training was evident during the planning and execution of the September 2013 Hazardous Materials Technician Refresher Training event involving the 82nd Civil Support Team and the Rapid City Fire Department Hazardous Materials Team. This training opportunity was vital to the sustainment and success of the 82nd Civil Support Team as it allowed both teams to train together over the three-day period, culminating with an interagency exercise on the final day. Paramedic Johnson's motivation and professionalism while supporting the U.S. 5th Army during our September and October 2012 Exercise Evaluation is a reflection of his unselfish passion for training. These and other training opportunities allow both teams to exercise on a level that fosters cooperativeness and integration of our capabilities. The success of this training will foster a stronger understanding and working relationship between all agencies. His passion for our community and its response preparedness is evident and stands second to none. Again, we extend our gratitude for your support. Your professionalism brings great credit upon yourself, the Rapid City Fire Department, the City of Rapid City, and the state of South Dakota. Signed, Brendan T. Murphy, Lieutenant Colonel, Chemical Corps, South Dakota Army National Guard, commanding.
One last thing that I have for Al here is, tradition in the military is to give a coin of excellence. The coins don't get handed out that often. And this one in particular is actually numbered with his name on it, so it's even a little bit more rare. So, Al, again, for all your great work, professionalism, thank you for all you do. Thanks for being here.
Like the letter said, training like this is important, but I couldn't have done it without the help of Sergeant Robertson. So as a thank you, you have one of my challenge coins. Thank you.
We have one general public comment item, and we'll go to Patty Martenson.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. On November 20 of 2013, the Human Rights Campaign issued its 2013 Municipal Equality Report. The Municipal Equality Report examines the laws, policies, and services of municipalities across the country and rates them on their inclusiveness of gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender individuals. Score ranges from zero to 100, with 100 being the top score. Two things that we need to be reminded in this Municipal Equality Report. One is solely relating, evaluating the city on its municipal laws and policies. It is not a rating of the best places for gay and lesbian people to live, nor is it an evaluation of the adequacy or effectiveness of enforcement. The Municipal Equality Index specifically rates cities on their laws and policies. It is not a measure of a gay, lesbian person's lived experience in the community. For the state of South Dakota, five cities were assessed. Aberdeen, Brookings, Pierre, Rapid City, and Sioux Falls. As you can see, all the cities were ranked very low in the index. Aberdeen being the lowest, Brookings with the highest, and Rapid City falling in the middle of the list. In fact, South Dakota ranks among the bottom states as far as equality in municipal law. Other states that have ranked consistently lower than South Dakota are Alabama, Mississippi, and Wyoming. One city in particular, Missoula, Montana, has scored a score of 100 and is of comparable size and demographics as a Rapid City. And they achieved this without the help of a statewide relationship recognition or nondiscrimination laws. Now, the report does recognize that cities do face severe restrictions on their ability to have more inclusive nondiscrimination policies. But I believe the City of Rapid City can and should do better to advance equality for gay and lesbian individuals in this city. And we'd be more than willing to help achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patty. And we'll now go to Peiyu Harris.
If there are any questions, I have the full report for your city to review.
Thank you. We'll now go to Peiyu Harris under General Public Comment.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just real briefly, we've recently had a deal in the school system where we have a, every student is required to say the Pledge of Allegiance, which is all fine and dandy. However, two things are occurring here. One, our Native American students, being members of a sovereign state, kind of poses kind of a unique challenge. You can't be a member of a sovereign state and be forced to pledge allegiance to a foreign government. However cooperative it is, it just doesn't work. Second of all, how many of you have done the history about Pledge of Allegiance? Anyone? No hands that says no. Pledge of Allegiance was actually written by a gentleman who did not follow a democratic political ideology. So I think, you know, seeing that my grandfather fought in World War II for democracy, we've honored people here tonight that have put their lives on the line for democracy. They're fighting for the freedom for people to not say that pledge if they don't feel like it. I think that's something we need to consider, you know, when we have these, I hate the term forced, but the fact of the matter is, you know, when it's required, you can't require someone to pledge their allegiance to something if they don't truly believe it. You know, so I think that might be something that we need to, you know, consider when we talk about the school board and whatnot. So, other than that, that's my point. That's my comment.
Thank you very much.
All right.
We do not have any further general public comment items. Have I missed anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four. This is an update on Volunteer Organization Active in Disaster, also known as VOAD and Adventist Community Services. And we'll recognize Phyllis Alexander, Dakota Conference Director.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the privilege to talk to every one of you. I'm very pleased to do that. I'm sure you all have heard what VOAD is, but are you all aware of what we do? Because now we are gradually being, the public is being aware of VOAD and what it stands for. But for years, they said, "What is VOAD?" And I'm sure many of you did that also. I just want to give you a very quick history. VOAD came into effect after Hurricane Camille in 1969. And there, all the organizations that were involved at that time in disaster, it was chaos. Everybody tried to do anything, everything else. There was no communication. There was double work that was done all the time. In 1970, there were seven national disaster response organizations that came together to organize a organization called VOAD, Volunteer Organizations Active in Disaster. And especially, I want you to identify the name volunteer because all the work that they do is voluntary, okay? And so those seven that came together was the American Red Cross, Christian Reformed World Relief, the Mennonite Disaster Service, the National Disaster Relief of the Roman Catholic Church, Seventh Day Adventists, the Southern Baptists, and the St. Vincent de Paul Society. If you notice in the papers yesterday, they had a big article on the Southern Baptists that came here right after our huge storm and helped. And so we worked together, not only here in other states together, we also worked, well, with other states besides just here. They came up with four core principles, and those principles were cooperation, communication, coordination, and collaboration. And what I'm more here for to tell you is a little bit of what does South Dakota do for VOAD? And why am I here? How important is it that I'm here? First of all, VOAD here has been in effect for many years. In fact, I've been a member of VOAD and on the board and president off and on since 1998. So I kind of came in on the ground floor of that. In 1970 was when these organizations came together. Now, since then, more and more organizations have come together. And I'm going to give you a presentation, and you do have a copy in your packet, telling the different organizations here in South Dakota. They come together when there is a disaster. We have the most wonderful people, not only in our country, the United States of America, but in South Dakota. They come forth, even when you look at our ranchers, how people come forth to help others. Well, this is the same thing that we have done here. We have a regional, we have local, and right now, we are trying to bring up a VOAD, so we have an organization in the city. South Dakota is one of the very few states in the United States that has a VOAD liaison that is provided by Pierre, that works with emergency managers, works to bring together. Prior to that, even emergency managers did not know what VOAD did. Right now, we have a very, very close connection with them, so we can work together. So as this picture shows up here, you will see these are some of our organizations that are here in South Dakota. And I'm not going to go through every one. I'm sure every one of you can read, so you don't need to be here or for me to go through there. The one that I'd just like to bring with you that you never hear about in times of a disaster is Adventist Disaster Response. That is because we're behind the lines. When VOAD was organized back in 1970, then they, each organization picked something that they would be, it would be their specialty. And Adventist Community Service picked the specialty of donation management. So we handle warehousing. We handle all those things. So we are behind the scenes. Just for a quick, in 9/11, FEMA notified us immediately and asked us to have all the warehouses on the East Coast. Adventist Disaster Response had five warehouses in that area that came to 1.5 million square feet in different areas. And what would you need a warehouse for? Anything that was brought there that came from South Dakota went to our warehouses. And then from there, Red Cross, Salvation Army, Mennonites, and all these others came to our warehouse, took their supplies to Ground Zero. So we work behind the scenes. And that's what I am in charge of in both North and South Dakota for, in the VOAD. And we do, I was in Pierre in 2011. I was there for four weeks, running the warehouse there in Pierre. And then the left came home for a week, and then was in Minot for six weeks for the floods there. I have teams throughout both states that I can call. And there's a chain of command that we all have, just like every other organization. Do you have any questions? The one thing, why am I here? I would like your input. You should have my card along with this copy that I would be very happy to speak to any of your organizations, any of your churches, and explain not only what VOAD does, but how can they help. One of the things that we are very much trying to stop coming to disaster areas is SUVs. Now, I'm sure every one of you know what that is, but not in a disaster area. In a disaster area, that is a spontaneous, unaffiliated volunteers. You don't know they're coming, and they drive up with a bus of people from school, and they say, "Where am I going to sleep? Where am I going to eat?" We have no idea. We might need you in two weeks. That is why every organization has volunteers. We have a big organization. And even in this state, I can give you people from your org, from your... We have a big organization, and even in this state, I can give you people from your church where to go to for more information. Any questions?
Any questions for Phyllis? Well, thank you very much, Phyllis, and I'd like to take a moment and ask Jerry Wright to talk for a moment about the Thursday, December 19 chili feed for Rancher Benefit. And Jerry, if you want to tell us a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, guests, about a month ago, we received a briefing from Sylvia from the South Dakota Stock Rowers Association on the catastrophic impact upon the cattle industry from the blizzard that hit us on October 4th. And I know we heard about the soup supper in Sturgis, and there was a supper in Union Center and several places. So the next morning, a few of us were talking, "If they can do it, we can do it." And we are. So on Thursday, the 19th of December, and it's a challenge to those that are willing, they can show up and have a lunch between 11:30 and 1:30, or they can have supper between 4:30 and 7:30, or they can go back, come back for both meals. It's a free will offering. We're asking organizations and churches and youth groups and businesses and whatever, if they're ready, willing, and able to provide a roaster of chili. We have 31 already signed up, that they will be available at noon or at evening. It's a free will offering, and all entirely, all proceeds will go towards the Stock Rowers Ranchers Relief Fund. So I invite you, and I hope we can see some press out. There's a press release going out tomorrow, I believe, and we will have challenges out to many, many businesses. And if anyone in this crowd is available, wants to cook chili, I know I'm gonna, I've got one planned, and it's going to be called Council Chili. It's going to be liberal and conservative, different matters, okay? So have a little fun with that, okay? But I think there's going to be a good spirit. I think Rapid City doesn't realize, does not realize, the impact of ag upon its economy. It's, we take things for granted, but I can't remember the millions and millions and millions of dollars. But if you take a basic industry, the spinoff's about six to seven. So if there's $1,000 on sale of a cow or calf, it's $6,000 into our economy. That's huge. And to help these people out, at least in a symbolic way, is so important, and that's why this is so important. Cordially invite those that have interest to contact me or the chamber somewhere, but it'll be the 19th of December. And anyone wants to make chili, show up or serve, please do it. I know I can name a few sitting in the audience that have already accepted the challenge, but I won't do that because I didn't tell them I would, so. They're all smiling, they know who they are. But anyway, thank you.
Jerry, and if anybody's watching tonight is interested in participating, call my office at 394-4110. That's 394-4110. Or you can call Jerry directly. Can I give out your cell number over the air?
You bet. 415-2788. It's also in the phone book, so. Don't call after 9 o'clock or before 6:00 a.m. Please.
We also have our Pennington County Emergency Services Manager, Dustin Willett. Dustin, did you have anything to add tonight to this discussion on item number four?
No, well, really quick exposure. Dustin Willett, Rapid City Pennington County Emergency Manager. I've known Phyllis since before I took over the post of Emergency Manager, and then, and we've worked closely since I took over that post, both with Phyllis and with the other organizations that comprise VOAD. And there's actually a few pilot programs going on across the state for a localized VOAD. Phyllis mentioned that, that we're doing something in Rapid City. Well, Rapid City is one of three test communities or pilot programs throughout South Dakota where we're actually doing a local VOAD organization that comprises amateur radio and, and snowmobilers and all those other, you know, four-wheel groups and everyone that may have something to offer during time of disaster. So we couldn't do it without the volunteers. They definitely showed their true mettle. Over the last several weeks, hundreds and hundreds of calls for service have been answered by VOAD through, through 211 and the city helpline. So it's been a phenomenal outpouring of support from, from folks from outside our community, the Southern Baptists that came in. They were working in Colorado, they, they picked up from Colorado floods and came up here to help us cut trees, and we're here for several weeks cutting trees all out of the goodness of their heart. So those missions are incredibly important to support the, the overall goal of emergency management and public safety organizations. So your continued support is, is very much appreciated. So be happy to stand for any questions. Other than that, I'll let you get down to business.
We have a motion to acknowledge the report. Motion by Laurenti, second by Roberts, to acknowledge item number four. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We're now on public comment for items five through 55. Public comment is now open. I have one speaker request form, and that's for item number 32, and we'll recognize Dan Sefner from Destination Rapid City. Good evening, Dan.
Mayor, Council, I'm getting pretty comfortable coming up here anymore. Dan Sefner, President of Destination Rapid City. Had something happen today, just brought me back one more time. We got two more staff started today. Guess what came to my office? Where are we going to park? Where are we going to park? Ramp sold out, other lots are sold out, 20% waiting list. This just brings me to our point one more time, and I'm just here to restate what I talked about on November 13th. But currently, if you think back, not very long ago, the employee market where Main Street Square is, was pretty minimal. Maybe there were 30 employees or so in that block, maybe, not more than 30 to 40. Today, we counted up with full and part-time employees with Main Streets Square, Destination Rapid City, and MHL Shops, almost 250 with full and part-time, between the stores, the restaurant, the ice rink managers, the ice managers of the stores and the different things that they do. That's what we've created. It's a wonderful problem to have, and I've made that statement many times. But what we've created is over 250 jobs within a block here of City Hall. That's a big impact. But I do want to restate that Destination Rapid City is willing to match $2 million in matching funds for new parking spaces. The city have a definite agreement approved by City Council to build a new ramp or additional spaces by June 1st of 2014. That we take a look and finish the parking spaces and are under construction by December 1st of 2014. That's the agreement with Destination Rapid City. That is parking spaces. That is something that an employee up the street, down the street, a customer can use for parking in downtown Rapid City. And we have given the map we're looking at, Omaha to Quincy, 4th to 9th, so it does leave the door open for a lot of opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Would you not have any additional speaker request forms for items five through 55? Have I missed anyone? Public comment is now closed for these items. Any staff or council members like to remove any items five through 55 for separate consideration? We'll go to our Public Works Director, Terry Waltersdorf. Terry?
Item 32, please.
Item 32. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 51.
Okay, we have item 32 and item 51. Anything else? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the balance of five through 55 with the exception of 32 and 51? We have a motion by Scott and a second by Estes. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item number 32. Richie Nordstrom, would you read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 32 is a request the mayor to authorize staff to bring back recommendation for the downtown parking ramp request to February 11th, 2014 Public Works Committee meeting, and I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Scott, and we'll go to our Public Works Director, Terry Waltersdorf.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I pulled this off, I know this is a very important topic for the city, and I believe we can at least come back with a preliminary report as early as January 14, so I, that's kind of the goal I'm shooting for. I just wanted to make this council aware that we're aware of the importance of this, and we're going to do everything we can to, to get a report back to you a little sooner.
Thank you. Richie, would you like to amend your motion accordingly?
Certainly, Mayor. January 14th, I will make that amendment.
And that's the Public Works Committee? Okay. And that's okay with the seconder?
Does it, if they get it done early, can't they just bring it back earlier? Or does it have to be a motion to put it back on the agenda for that time? Can't we just leave it February 11th, and if Terry gets it ready, bring it forward?
We could do it either way. I prefer to have a report in, in January, so we can give the council an update on, and the community an update on how, how we're doing. That's okay with the motion maker and the seconder? Okay? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We'll now go to item number 51, or recognize our Legal and Finance Chair, Chad Lewis. Chad, item 51.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 51 is approved resolution 2013-118 establishing the terms of loan from the SAB 28 Fund to the Drainage Utility Fund for startup operational costs of the utility, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Amanda Scott, Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Waltersdorf a question, please?
You may.
Hi, Terry. On this, since we're actually creating the money now, and it's almost January, will this fund be tracked on the enterprise fund page, like all the other enterprise funds?
Yes, it will.
Sorry, I probably should have directed that to Pauline. So that'll begin in January, and I realize it might be 00 in January, since you're just building your staff and just hiring, but it'll, it'll be there, and the citizens can start looking up the financial statements as of January 1st, or end of January. And then, just a follow-up question, Mr. Waltersdorf, unless I got to go to Pauline for this one, too. This $750,000 that's supposed to get us through, I know that the way the assessment is supposed to work is that it, the first monies in 2015 won't be collected until April, May. Will this $750,000 carry through, do you think, to carry you through the first quarter of 2015?
I don't know that I have a good answer for that yet. There may be a, that first quarter, we may have to carry some additional funds over to bankroll that. I don't know that we've really looked at that that close yet.
Okay. I'll follow up with you later. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I yield the floor.
Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on non-consent items, items 56 through 97. We have several speaker request forms. We have two speaker request forms for item 67 and none for the other items. So if you'd like to speak on any of the items 56 through 97, if you could please fill out a speaker request form. It's over at the table to, to my right. We'll recognize first Mike Gould, item 67.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I will be more brief than normal. I just wanted to come to clarify one issue. About eight years ago, I was asked by the Performing Arts Organization to make a proposal to the 2012 committees to fund a standalone performing arts center. Thank goodness for the generous response. We today have a standalone performing arts center located up the street. One thing I just wanted to clarify there, though, we did at that time, during the three separate presentations to the three separate citizen committees for the 2012, did include $69,000 in our request for city subsidy at that time. And it's a lot of money, there's no question of that, but I just wanted to point out that today, we're not asking for that much money. We're, we're close, but we're not asking for that much money. I just want to ask you again, please generously fund the arts again. What you did eight years ago really has helped a lot of people, has changed a lot in this community, it's added to the, the community, I believe. It's made this a much better place to live, and it's given a lot of opportunity for a lot of kids and adults as well to perform. So $69,000, give it, give it a shot, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And we'll recognize Crystal McKee, also on item 67. Good evening, Crystal.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm the President of the Operating Board of the Performing Arts Center, and I am just here in support of, and asking for your support as well, of startup funding, or stopgap funding, whichever way you would like to term it, for the Performing Arts Center. I did want to clarify one point as well, and that was just in conversations with council members today. Yes, the city did fund through Vision Funding, $3.25 million designated for the building of the Performing Arts Center, as did a capital campaign to the public that raised $1.8 million, also designated to the building of the Performing Arts Center. At no time can capital campaign funds be used for operating cash or operating purposes unless specifically designated by any of the donors. And I just wanted to clarify that the money was for the building and not for the operating. So I will be here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Crystal. We do not have any additional speaker request forms on items 56 through 97. Have I missed anyone? Seeing none, public comment is now closed on those items, and we'll start off with item number 56. Go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 56 is the second reading of ordinance 5968, an ordinance requiring the standardized development agreement be entered into in conjunction with smitl of development engineering plans, and requiring a fully executed development agreement as a condition of approval for final plats by amending chapter 16.12 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 57.
Item 57, first reading of ordinance 5975, an ordinance to change the organizational makeup at the Department of Public Works by amending chapter 2.44 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Estes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 58.
Item number 58 is first reading of ordinance 5971, a supplemental appropriation for 2013, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 59.
Item number 59 is first reading of ordinance 5972, an ordinance amending chapter 2.89 of the Rapid City Municipal Code by amending sections 2.89.060 concerning membership and terms of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and adding sections 2.89.070 and 2.89.080 concerning Rapid City Beautification Committee and the Rapid City Urban Wildlife Committee, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 60.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 60 is first reading of ordinance 5973, an ordinance amending provisions concerning Rapid City Urban Forestry Board by amending sections 12.32.030 and 12.32.040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 61 is first reading of ordinance 5969, an ordinance adopting provisions concerning Rapid City Public Libraries Board of Trustees by adding chapter, excuse me, 2.6886 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion?
If you can't understand me, I just drove in from Tulsa, Oklahoma, so I'm a little tired. Excuse my stumbling.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 62, Chad.
Item number 62, first reading of ordinance 5970, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning with described property as requested by Spurlock Consulting for Terry, Inc., bachelor, for Terry Bachelor, from flood hazard district to low density residential district, and for property generally located at north of intersection Creek Drive and East St. Charles Street, and I move approval in conjunction with the comprehensive plan amendment.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 63, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank goodness.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 63 is a request by Spurlock Consulting, Inc., for Gordon Howey, attorney, in the fact that for RJ Development for preliminary subdivision plan for property generally located at the current terminus of Savannah Street and Leola Lane, and I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second. Motion by Nordstrom, second by Roberts, to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 64, Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 64 is a request by Kimley Horn and Associates for preliminary subdivision plan for Lot 6, Block 2 of the Black Hills Center for property generally located at 35 East Stumer Road, and I move to approve with stipulations.
Second. Motion by Richie, second by Steve Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Motion carries. Item sixty-five, we'll go back to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item sixty-five, it's confirm appointments Donna Winkler and Don Frankenfeld, the Restmore Plaza Civic Center Board of Directors. I have a couple of questions, please.
Floor has been yielded. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. I'm curious as to Mr. Frankenfeld, can I ask you a couple of questions, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I just have a couple of quick questions. I guess I'm very...I'm not gonna oppose this nomination tonight. I just wanna make sure that I have a couple of assurances from you that I...you've been very publicly critical of the staff of the Civic Center and of the Civic Center itself sometimes and I just wanted to make sure that you're not going in there with any sort of pre-planned agendas or anything like that because I think it's important that in this time of the Civic Center's uncertainty that we kind of stay the course as much as we possibly can, at least for now, because I think it's...the people that have been there for a while have done a pretty good job considering the nature of that job and the high-profile position that it is. So, I just wanna make sure, you know, from my own personal perspective, a level of comfort that, you know, you're gonna go in with an open mind as much as possible and do, you know, do your best because I know, like I said, you've been a very...you have a right to be very publicly critical and I appreciate that, but I just wanna make sure that this is something...so, can you give me those kind of assurances or anything? Can you help me relieve my concerns?
Well, I think so. That's a very fair question and as I said to the Legal and Finance Committee last week, it's a question I asked myself before I applied for this position. I have been critical, not of the staff, but of...not of the staff, but of the director. And the question was, could I be fair to Brian Maliski? And I believe that I can. I have made some suggestions, including publicly, and it still seems to me that those suggestions are good and viable from my perspective as an outsider. But I recognize that as a board member, my job is to be collaborative, supportive, not to be a micromanager. And I promise you that I'm going to do my level best to avoid all of those character deficiencies that may otherwise arise. It's a very reasonable question you've asked.
I appreciate your honesty, sir, and I appreciate your open-mindedness. Just like I said, I think it's just very important, I mean, I would like to see Mr. Howgo reappointed just because of...nothing against you, just because I think its continuity would have been nice at this point, but the mayor's chosen to go with you and says you're a guy and so I'm not gonna oppose that. I'm gonna support him, but I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same board, on the same page because I think that the staff down there and Mr. Maliski and potential, from my perspective, has done a good job. He's always at every event I've ever been to, even...it doesn't matter if it's late at night or early in the day. He didn't know me from a hole in the wall for years. So, I just wanna make sure that, you know, you understand where I'm coming from and I appreciate your honesty and I wish you the best of luck and I'm not gonna hold this nomination up, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you not currently have a motion on the floor? We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking for advice from the chair here. Is it okay or appropriate to divide the question?
It is, and there's two ways to do it. If there's no objection, we'll just declare it divided and dividing the question simply means that we handle each of these nominations with individual votes. And would you like to see the question divided?
Yes, I would, please.
Are there any objections to dividing the question? If there's any objections, we'll just have a motion to divide the question. Otherwise, if there's no objections, we'll declare the question divided and we'll consider the...since it appears first on the agenda, I guess we would consider Donna Winkler's nomination first.
If I may hold the floor for a moment. Mayor, I don't have any objections to Mr. Frankenfeld getting appointed and I have not had a chance to talk to Ms. Winkler about her appointment on this, but my major concern is what was presented here earlier by Alderman Lewis is the concern for Mr. Howgo being the vice chair of the Civic Center Board and having the opportunity to move up to the chair of the board. And I'm concerned about that loss of continuity on there. So, at this stage, I get to decide if the question is sustained...division of the question is sustained, then I've got to make another decision about who I support, whether I support one or the other and/or not each other. But right now, Mr. Frankenfeld and I had a good conversation and the same questions that Alderman Lewis has brought up are primarily the same questions that I had for Mr. Frankenfeld. And at this stage, I'm comfortable not in any way meaning derogatory comments about Donna because the only thing is about Ms. Winkler is that I just don't know her at all and you can lay the blame on me for that if you'd like, but that's the reason why I'm asking for the division of the question. Thank you.
The question has been divided. We are now on the confirmation of the appointment of Donna Winkler. We do not have a motion, so we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will make a motion to approve Donna Winkler for the Civic Center Board.
We have a second by Lewis, a motion by Roberts. Okay? And we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Well, if I may hold the floor.
Oh, wait a minute. We've divided the question, so we're going to consider one...we have...we've divided the question.
Yes.
And so now we're...we have a motion on the floor on Donna Winkler.
Oh, I thought we'd voted.
So we basically divided this into two items.
Thank you. I thought we'd already voted on it.
We're on the motion for Donna Winkler at this point.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I also made my statements at the Legal and Finance Committee meeting and my best regards to Ms. Winkler and Mr. Frankenfeld, I have no issues with either one of them being appointed. The issue I have is losing that continuity. We currently have a member on the Civic Center Board who has served one term, did apply for a second term, wanted to serve a second term, and currently has the most seniority on the Civic Center Board. And so, I'll probably be voting both or no on both of these because my objection is not to either candidate, my objection is not bringing back and keeping the continuity and keeping the most senior person on that Civic Center Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Bonnie Peterson.
I'm going to support these nominations, however, I agree with dissenting voices that the continuity, the leadership on this board should have been maintained. We can't force you to do it, but I hope that you will take that in consideration next time you have your appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any further discussion? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries with two no's from Scott and Nordstrom. Anyone else? Okay. Motion carries. And now we are on to Don Frankenfeld's nomination to the Civic Center Board. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Roberts and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
I wanted to nominate him because he's an old friend from junior high. That's about eighty years ago. Oh, that's okay. That's okay. Just Donna and I to calm some waters and I, too, had those concerns of volatility towards the Civic Center management, but Donna and I visited at great length a couple of weeks ago and I walked out there very comfortable with his...the Don Frankenfeld I know and I support his nomination a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries with one no from Amanda Scott. Anyone else? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We're now on item number sixty-six. Chad Lewis, can you read item sixty-six in the agenda for us?
If I can wake up. Okay, item number sixty-six is authorize the mayor to, in finance office, assign the fourth addendum to master development agreement with President's Plaza LLC and move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Scott. And we'll go to Jerry Wright.
I request, because of negotiations and some discussion that I was involved with today, that we go into a short, brief executive session to discuss those items with our attorney and it related to the contracts and so forth, if I said that right.
We'll go to our city attorney, Joel Landin, for guidance.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that would be appropriate. The purpose of the executive session would be pursuant to SDCL one-twenty-five dash two, subsection three, with consulting with legal counsel regarding contractual matters.
Okay. We have a motion by Wright and we have a second by John Roberts. Any discussion on the motion to go into executive session? Seen none? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are in executive session. We have motion to come out of executive session. We have motion by Lewis, second by Scott. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are on item sixty-six and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Can I withdraw my motion first? Or do you make a substitute motion? Okay.
Let me get back to my agenda. For item number sixty-six, I make a motion to continue for two weeks. If I may hold the floor, please.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Peterson to continue this for two weeks to the next city council meeting.
I just want to publicly ask the question, is there are issues and questions to be discussed and would it be appropriate for council leadership, possibly the mayor, to put together a team of parties or persons involved to just discuss what we could do to resolve the issues between now and December sixteenth? I'm open for discussion at the dais. I think we should, but I'm willing to listen.
Any discussion on that? Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry, in your motion there, did I understand correctly that the mayor would do the appointments to the task force, if that's your desire to make it, create a task force?
No, it's not...I don't want to get to the level where it's setting in a standing committee or a long-term event. I would like to sit down with the mayor and his council leadership and say, let's pick a few people off the council, some people involved with the project and possibly Dan Zepner from just Destination Rapid City. Let's discuss all the issues so we can make a decision on how we can make Presidential Plaza a reality, or if we can't. I think just a team to discuss it over the two weeks, that's it.
So, if I could just get a clarification, is what you're suggesting to the mayor but not making a motion? Isn't my understanding of that part of it correct? It's just encouraging the mayor to create a task force?
I think if I may, there's already a group together that's been identified that has been meeting previously, so perhaps that group would be appropriate. And if council leadership is not on that, they could certainly join in and staff can be present as we have been at previous meetings.
And can we add others that are not on that if we need to for discussion or invite them in?
Certainly invite whoever you want to invite, so long as we don't have a quorum of the council on the committee.
That's okay with me, as long as we have a forum for discussion for resolution of issues so we can hopefully get this down the track, one way or the other.
Joel, anything further? Everyone understands the motion? Motion is to continue for two weeks and allow the discussions between the parties to continue. There's already an appointed President's Plaza Committee that includes several council members and some staff. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries with one no from Brad Estes. Thank you. We're now on item number sixty-seven. Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number sixty-seven is funding request for Performing Arts Center of City Rapid City. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Jerry Wright to approve the amount of what? Fifty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars from unencumbered cash and a second by Bonnie Peterson.
That is clarify their shortfall through June thirtieth of next year.
Repeat the motion, please, since your mic was off.
Thank you. The motion is to approve the funding request, but make it fifty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars so their estimated shortfall through June thirtieth is covered. Is that okay, Bonnie?
Yes, but I would suggest we take it out of council contingency.
I'm sorry?
I would suggest we take it out of council contingency instead of unencumbered cash.
It's up to you.
Okay. Okay by me.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment by Bonnie Peterson that has been accepted by the motion maker. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If this motion passes, then when we come...actually, we already approved the first reading of the supplemental appropriation, so just so you are aware, if you do approve this tonight, we will add it to the second reading of the supplemental appropriation.
It's okay by the motion maker.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to voice my disapproval of this motion. This was brought to us late in the twenty-fourteen budget hearings as a total amount. I can't remember the exact figure, but I think it was like two-hundred-and-four thousand dollars, somewhere near that, two-hundred thousand dollars. I don't remember the exact figure, maybe one of my colleagues can help me, but the fact of the matter is the taxpayers have, through the Vision Fund, put together three million, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to make this happen and I wholeheartedly support that. It's something the community needs. But as I said at the Legal and Finance meeting, when we go down this road, and we've been down this road before, and the community...I should say, we've been on this journey before, the taxpayers, you know, approved the Vision Funds or back then twenty-twelve funds prior because it was going to build these things that they thought were gonna be good for our community and it's done great things for our community. And in this particular case, it's done great things for our community. But what I...from a policy standpoint and because we have made a mistake once before, this council has, and we have been using the taxpayers' money in a subsidy for many, many years on a previous Vision Funds project and the taxpayers were told there wasn't gonna be a thing more than that, and here we are, we're at the precipice of making a decision once again to go down the wrong road. And so I would encourage my colleagues to make the right decision in this particular case so that we can...and this group will have greater success in raising the funds that they need to, not only this year and next year and the year after, but long-term. Because if we muddy the waters, if we make it difficult, which we will, if we begin to subsidize this great effort, it will hurt their ability to work with the public to gain the funds that they need without using the taxpayers' money in perpet- it will hurt their ability to work with the public to gain the funds that they need without using the taxpayers' money in perpetual. I want to say in perpetuity, but forever. And that's what's happened previously. And so I would urge my colleagues to think through this and understand that, you know, that they need this money. But the reality is, long-term, once we go down this road, it becomes much more difficult, as you all know, to pull back. And so I'm hoping that my colleagues will make the right decision this evening. Thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Crystal McKee a couple of questions, please?
You may.
Hi, Crystal.
Hello.
My questions are in reference to our conversation we had earlier today, Crystal.
Correct.
I'm just basically asking you to confirm, basically based on our conversation earlier today, I share a lot of the same sentiments as Alderman Laurenti, and I express that to you.
Correct.
This organization needs to be able to be self-funding. And so when we had our conversation earlier today, I indicated that I would be in support of startup money after you indicated that the school had already renegotiated and will be giving you, the Performing Arts Center, a break for the next two years. So in-kind contributions or donations are already being made by the school.
Correct.
And so we discussed it further, and I said, and I also indicated to you that if I voted in favor of this startup funds tonight, I would not be in favor of offering up any more of the taxpayers' money going forward because this would strictly be your startup, get you through this year, but your financing is all on you guys.
Correct.
All right.
And that is the conversation we had. And I just have a comment. I too share Mr. Laurenti's viewpoint. It does need to be self-sustaining, but it needs its start. So, and other organizations have had that start that have also received Vision 2012 funding, so.
Thank you, Crystal. I yield the floor.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. The, a couple of good points from Alderman Laurenti is from the Vision Funding that has been brought up in the past. And without mentioning any names directly, we've been funding these outside sources, and not just one, but several other agencies out there. And I'd still like to see something moved in the direction of the Allied Arts, getting this responsibility and taking a look at the funding, the proper funding levels for the different agencies that we have to, have to, or would like to support. Crystal, if I can ask you one more question?
Sure.
I want to be very clear on this capital project fundraising that you went on.
Yes.
The donors cannot, how does that work? Let me ask it that way. How does that work for that?
If a donor donates to a capital campaign, they must specifically designate if it is to be allowed for operating funding, so.
Understand. And then that has to be essentially a different entire program to do the operation, financing, funding, finding more revenue for that.
Our capital campaign was a capital campaign. We did have a donor designate some portion to operating, and that was the portion that we had been using.
Thank you, Crystal.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I think it's just ultimately that we have to be very clear on how you went about doing the fundraising part of that.
Correct.
So it was not specifically for, let me rephrase that. It was specifically for capital projects.
Correct.
Yeah, capital investment funding. And then the other part of it is, thank you, Crystal.
Okay.
Okay, the other, the other portion of this is that Vision Funding of the different agencies that we've had out there, seems like there is a greater number of each time we do a Vision Fund project that is coming forward for a further or continuing investment, needs to be looked at at that level rather than us having that debate. So if we can get that suggestions and put into the Vision Funding policies, ordinances, recommendations, rather than having that debate here, I think that would enhance the Vision Funding as well. Because I'm just also looking at the organization, how this is all put together. And just specifically, what I'm concerned about is the different agencies that I represent as liaison, how we are going to continue them for the funding on that. And that's why I'm interested in developing something along the line of an Allied Arts Fund. And I don't know of anybody that is out there in the nation as far as a public-funded organization, agency, such as the theater, or the arts, or the museums, that can be self-sufficient. All the private ones, they're doing fine. But it's the public ones that are having the struggles. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I'm not going to abstain. I appreciate the remarks by my fellow councilman, Mr. Laurenti. You know, this is a trap that the Vision 2012, or the Vision Funds have caught the City of Rapid City in, you know, numerous, numerous projects. You know, it makes, it makes us, it makes it awful easy to build neat buildings and things that, you know, run as, run as an operational at a deficit. Some of them are city-owned assets, and some of them are joint ventures with other people. You know, and we've invested a lot of money in sports, and I think we have darn near every athletic or sports genre who, you know, has been, has had their finger in 2012, or, you know, Vision Funds in some sort of fashion. And likewise with the arts. And I'm not an art guy, and I'm not an athletic guy. If I could have it my way, we'd spend all the money on a Speedway, you know? We'd just, we'd have the Rapid City, you know? I'm just, I'm not, I'm not here. But, but I feel like we need to support this, this time. It's this asset of the community. They're doing good things. We need to help them get on their feet. I'm going to catch a little grief for voting for fifty thousand dollars. I got people in my ward that don't have paving. I got, we got to pave that last bit of 12th Street yet, you know? But, but tonight, I'm going to support this. Thanks.
To Bill Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Crystal, if I could ask you a question, please?
Yes.
Sorry, you've been up and down like a yo-yo.
No, no problem. I'm hanging out in front here.
It's a good thing not to go all the way back to the back of the room. Three point two-five million, plus one point eight for capital investments is just a little bit, five point oh-five million. How much of that money has been spent?
I wish I had a school official here because they could tell me. Do you know, Michael? Well, all collected funds have been spent as far as the capital. However, we do have pledges out for the next three to five years, depending on the donor. And I did do a capital outlay, and I want to say it's around three-hundred and fifty thousand to be collected.
Okay, so the three fifty...
In pledges.
Okay, so the three fifty would then complete the one point eight. So the one point eight is not...
Collected, correct.
Not yet collected.
Correct. However, all but ninety thousand of that is in a capital outlay plan. We would like to reserve ninety to a hundred thousand for future maintenance, for an investment account for future maintenance, et cetera. We will be, let's put it that way.
Okay, and are there any plans or efforts being made to generate funds that would be for other than capital outlay?
Yes, for operating, yes. We have a series of fundraisers that we have either started or in the works. One, letter campaign, name a seat campaign. Our income also comes from our rental of the facility, as well as future plans for funding. And we have received one grant, a sustainability grant, that was from the John T. Ferkurwitz Foundation for a three-year sustainability, as well as, as we said, the in-kind assistance from the school district at this time.
And if I may, one more question?
Sure.
If some of these projects for operation funds...
Correct.
Are underway, how are they doing?
Well, you have to remember that this board, which isn't officially, we have an operating board and an MOU board, took office in July. And so some are in the process of being started. And as far as the take a seat campaign, it began the end of September, and we've had a little, a few hits on that. Not a lot, not yet. It takes time to grow those things and get those, that information out, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'll yield the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We'll go to Jerry Wright, and then I have a few words I'd like to say.
Let me give him a Gotham City, Chapter Two speech, I guess. And I think what we're talking about is quality of life. We just had a discussion about what Main Street Square has done to Rapid City. I can go back to forty years ago when we did not have trees or nodes in downtown, and we had concrete straight through, and it was a god-ugly sight compared to what we have today. But we put money into trees, and benches, and corners, and parks, and stuff like that. We also support through our tax dollars, either through our schools or our local deal, that we have parks. We have recreation facilities, we have music, we have music facilities, we have the band shell. Of course, drama, culture, history, we have sports events. I don't think there's a single sporting event in Rapid City. I think they're all great, they're paying for themselves. We have trees, we have Christmas lights, we have bike paths, we have entry signs, and the list goes on and on and on. They're paid for, or at least partially, with tax dollars. I think our recreation facilities bring in about sixty percent revenue, and we match it forty percent. And I feel sorry that Journey gets, keep getting kicked around. If we didn't have the Journey, the Department of Interior, Native American Collection, I believe, would be gone. It wouldn't even be in this state. It'd be gone. Am I right, Richie? We would lose the most valuable cultural thing we have in the state of South Dakota, and especially West River, period. We also have other collections and items on display over there that reflect Rapid City's early history, our pioneers, our flood, and other things. If we didn't have that, they too would be gone. Now, my memory is fading, but it's still there. And I do remember discussions of collections, and I believe one of them was the Duhamel, and I think one of them was the La Croix collections. If I'm quoting names wrong, I apologize. All subject to the weather and environment and so forth, without proper storage and protection, they deteriorate and go away. So we built a museum. And we were somewhat misled by a consultant saying, well, if you build it, they shall come and it'll support itself. I guess that was a statement made that we regret. But as a community, we need to step forward and support those things that keep Rapid City in color and in beauty, and not shades of black and gray. So the rhetoric gets a little old, and I'm just speaking from my heart, and I respect everybody's opinion. But I find it tough to not speak out in support of the things that make Rapid City what it is. It isn't just the garbage trucks, it isn't just the snowplows, it isn't just the streets, or the storm drainage, or the sewers, or the water. It's everything. And the things that we really appreciate are the things that are frills. Those are things that we pay for above and beyond that are not absolutely essential for our safety, but they are for our welfare. I think it's important that we honor that and take care of it and support such things as this. Now, in the future, I think you're getting money from us is going to be probably more difficult, unfortunately. But prepare yourself for the next round to be self-sustaining or very close to it. But I think it's sad that we have these arguments. I think we as a community need to invest in ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Are there any other council members who'd like to speak? Otherwise, I have a few comments I would like to make. John, would you like to go first? Go ahead. As long as you're not calling, as long as you're not...
No, I'm not calling the question. You can go first if you want.
Well, what I'd like to say, first of all, is that I'd like, I'd like to clarify the discussion tonight. And I would like to ask for a council member to offer an amendment that this is approved contingent on Performing Arts signing an agreement with, you know, the city attorney's office can draft. I believe that there was a previous draft that had been discussed when the amount was higher. But that this would, that this is approved contingent on them signing an agreement that this is it. I would like to see that amendment. And then I have some comments that I would, that I would like to make. We'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think Brad brought up a good point, Jerry brought up some good points. One thing about the Vision Fund, we have so many projects that we've done where we don't think about the capital outlay costs afterwards. And this is something that probably should have had some money built into it for a contingency. And I think these are discussions we need to have in the future on the council as far as the Vision Fund. I cannot support this. I could not support the twenty-six thousand they were actually asking for, and I definitely can't support the fifty-four thousand with the monies added by Jerry Wright. And the reason I can't is because this was a Vision Fund project, and now the money that you're asking for is coming out of the general fund, which everyone, every property taxpayer in Rapid City is paying for. And not everybody, property taxpayer in Rapid City uses this facility, unfortunately. I was supportive of the Vision Fund, three point two-five million paying for this, but I will not be supporting the money coming out of the general fund. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
I can't support putting this is it to them unless we put it to everybody else. And I made a list, if I could, if I need to repeat it, I would, but I'm not going to, of areas that we have supported with tax dollars. But why not this one? What's the difference? I mean, does baseball and swimming different than the arts and the violin or the paintbrush? I don't think so. They're all good for our children and good for our culture. I think, I totally agree with what John said. We have built structures, we've built facilities in the past without anybody giving a thought of what it costs to operate or maintain. That's happened, I know. But I think that this is a small amount of money, and I cannot support putting a limit and say, no, this is it. Unless they walk up and say, they offer it. Because if we're going to do that, I think we should do it to everybody else. Fair is fair.
Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, I've been talking about this project, actually, for two years, that this funding was going to be needed. The mayor knew they needed funding two years ago. We know this is a flaw in the Vision, in the Vision Fund. And so what we're saying, or some of us on the council are saying, well, we gave the three point two-five million, so let's just let the building sit there and let people go and look at it every once in a while. We're not going to do anything to promote it, to help the operational expenses. You're on your own. While we're building swimming pools, and we're, City is subsidizing entrances into the swimming pools. That's what the city does. We know it's a flaw. We've taken some steps to improve the next vision so that there's more focus on operational because we know that it, it comes back to bite us. And we have to sit up here and hem-haw around about it, about whether or not to support it or to cut it loose. During the Vision presentations, we know that during those Vision presentations, that they said they would need money. But somehow, a volunteer came up here in front of the council members at the very end and said they wouldn't need money. Well, these are not business people, these are not, these are volunteers that work to make our community better. And Mayor, I'm surprised that you're picking this one to say that you want it to not come back. Don't let us know if you have any more problems. You know, like Jerry says, if we're going to pick one, let's pick them all. Not just pick one of them out and say, don't come back to us. I think we're sending a strong message to the Performing Arts Center that they need to be self-sufficient and that they're not facing a very, well, we want to be self-sufficient. And we're giving them this money in hopes that that will help them. And we're giving them this money in hopes that that will help them become, uh, self-sufficient. Because I, for one, would have a much greater time as a taxpayer wondering why we spent three point two five million. And yet we didn't back it up with any money to help it afterwards. That we thought, oh, well, you had your chance and you lost. So obviously, I'm gonna be supporting this. The mayor had asked for them to come just once. And that is good, except that we don't have as much money that, to give them as we should be giving them this, at this point. So, yes, it needs to be self-sufficient. Everyone up here is right that has spoken about self-sufficiency, that it does need to be that way. We've helped. Look at Destination Rapid City. We gave them money of Main Street Square, and look what they have done. Now they're offering us money. So, um, it's, um, you know, a wonderful thing. Yes, we have other concerns in our community, but we shouldn't be picking on one group over another group. The city subsidizes the water for the sports fields. I mean, the city subsidizes a lot of different things for all, all across this city, different groups. And this is another one of those, is to help this arts, that we've already committed three point two five million dollars to, to become vibrant and, uh, self-sufficient. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, I, I, I respect your opinion, but I, I can't support what you're asking us to do. And, and I'll just tell you why. I, I had a chance this afternoon to talk to Crystal and, and Mike Gould. And I had a chance, they showed me the, the presentation that they gave to the, uh, the Vision Fund Group. And it, it, right in his presentation, it showed that it would require, right, wrong, or indifferent, it, it showed that they were looking for a sixty-nine thousand dollar annual, uh, operational help from the city. It should, right in its presentation. Now, I don't know what, I don't know if the people that voted to get, give the three point two five million dollars, how they paid attention to it. And I don't know if they were relying up on that when they thought they got the money. But, but for right now, you know, that doesn't mean that I'm gonna vote to give them sixty-nine thousand next year or the following year. But I guess I feel obligated. I think, you know, maybe there was some miscommunication, but I, I, I think there was some reliance that there might be some help this first year or on the operational side. And for that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Brad. I have a few more comments, and then we'll proceed to additional discussion or the vote. You know, this is a difficult, this is a difficult debate, because we are, we are really, you know, in a, in a, a tough spot. I, I remember the discussion in two thousand nine, and there was a, there was a, a promise made by one of the principals, not a volunteer, but one of the prin, maybe it was a vol, maybe volunteered for the organization, but one of the principals, as part of this project, said that there would be no ongoing, uh, city investment other than the three million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, and that, that, that was prior to the council approval of the three million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I, I think it's important that we, you know, that we recognize, uh, in terms of, of our priorities, that we have many, many other needs. And I, I had met with two of the principals earlier this year, uh, Merritt, Olson, and, and Ron Reed regarding this. And I had, you know, I, I had said, look, um, you guys need to, to come up with, with your plan. Your plan for raising money, your plan for what, what you're going to need. And the budget's going to be put together in, in May. And there were some issues with the, uh, the committee. The, uh, MOU Board had apparently been, uh, disbanded. And we've resolved that now with the new, uh, memorandum of understanding. We have a, a governance committee that's been put, um, put back in place. But there was an unequivocal promise of, of no, no subsidy. And it was written in stone. The problem is, is that you have the people, different people involved now that have inherited a situation that somehow needs to be, uh, resolved. I think it's important that we put this in context. Up until this morning, I thought the amount that was going to be requested tonight was going to be twenty-seven thousand dollars. Now the amount is fifty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. I know that the overall amount that had been, uh, bantered back and forth, that Wade Nyberg, our Assistant City Attorney, had been working on an agreement, was, uh, was, was perhaps up to two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars over the next, uh, the next few years. I don't know where that amount's going to, to end up. But I think it's important that the council recognizes that in terms of, you know, it's been said, picking one group over another. I think it's important to recognize, this is, this is general fund money that we're talking about. You know, helping the, helping the Little League fields, watering the fields and, and that sort of thing. I mean, what we're doing by, that, that comes from our, our enterprise funds and our water, uh, funds, which ultimately, of course, is subsidized through the rates. And so you can make the very logical argument that the citizens are subsidizing that, uh, as well. But we have a, a police department and a fire department and other departments that have tremendous needs as well. We have, just to put this in context, we have added, all of us, we have added, uh, twenty-two full-time city employees in the last two years. And I can, every one of those can be, uh, defended. We are a growing community with growing needs. Today, our Public Works Director mentioned to me that at some point, we're going to need a, uh, a water, a water rate study. And that's, that's going to have to come forward, and it'll be coming through the Water Advocacy Task Force. We have a new, uh, storm water, uh, utility fee that's going to be in place, uh, effective, uh, twenty fifteen. There's going to be tremendous pressure on, on, on me and on this council to take the, uh, the CPI for property tax for, uh, twenty, uh, twenty fifteen. And I am, uh, I'm just really concerned. This, this highlights a fundamental flaw, flaw in the Vision Fund, uh, process. That groups have been put into the position, in order to get Vision Fund money, they have to stand up, and they basically have to say unequivocally, because I wasn't the only council member asking the questions. You go back, back and watch the tape. Uh, we had a, a mayor at the time that was questioning the need for ongoing, uh, funding. We had a number of council members, and basically the message was sent. Look, if you need ongoing funding, you're probably not going to get the three million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, I remember this, I remember the sixty-nine or eighty thousand dollars that had been discussed in the, in the committees. I was on, uh, one of the committees in, in two thousand and five. But we decided, look, if we give you this much money upfront, three million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then you need to be self-sufficient. And that's what the, that, that's what the, uh, discussion was. So, you know, we are really in a, in a difficult, uh, difficult spot. We do have an allied fund, uh, arts, uh, arts board that was designed to be able to, uh, to, uh, help the arts, uh, groups and that. But that's a, a pot of money. I think it's a hundred and two thousand dollars for next year. Obviously, there isn't room for that, for anywhere close to this amount. But again, I would like to reiterate, uh, I, I don't want to be in the position to be in the bad guy here, because there isn't gonna be the money to put in ninety thousand dollars, I don't think, into the twenty fifteen budget, based on the fact that we need more, uh, more FTEs. And we have, uh, additional needs for other general funds, uh, especially in, uh, in, in streets and maintenance, which is, um, all, some of that is also part of general funds. And so I don't want to be in a position of, of, of the expectation being set tonight, that there's, that there's going to be, uh, the balance of that two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars included in the, in the twenty fifteen, uh, budget. And that's why I was hoping to have an amendment that just, that, that Wade, Wade Nyberg had already worked up a, worked up a draft agreement that had been, uh, that had been discussed. Why not amend it so that it says, okay, you're asking for fifty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars, uh, tonight? We'll give you that money, but then please don't come back and ask for anything more. Please come back and pl, please, uh, go to the community. Get the resources that you need to help this, uh, facility, um, uh, run, because nobody else is going to contribute to our police and fire department if city general fund doesn't support it, other than some, maybe some federal grants. But there are other opportunities to fund, uh, to fund this. And I believe that with, uh, with the proper participation in the community, it can be, uh, it can be funded. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Call the question.
Question's been called. Are there any objections to calling the question? The motion, the motion is to approve fifty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars from council contingency, general fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Estes.
Aye.
Peterson. Lewis. Doyle, sorry. Wright. Scott. Nordstrom. Roberts. Clayton. Laurenti. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries, uh, six to three. Item number sixty-eight. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Item sixty-eight is to approve request from M. Hill Business Plaza for variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk per city ordinance twelve point oh eight point zero sixty along Omaha Street and deny request for variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk per city ordinance twelve point oh eight point oh sixty along Canal Street for the property located at fourteen oh one Omaha Street. And I'll move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be abstaining from this, uh, vote. Thanks.
So noted. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Brad Estes. We are now on alcohol beverage license applications, uh, items sixty-nine through ninety-six. Sixty-nine through ninety-six, would any council member like to remove these for separate consideration? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve all of these items. Motion by Scott, second by Roberts, to approve items sixty-nine through ninety-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on item number ninety-seven. This is to authorize the finance officer to sign state applicant agreement, uh, state of South Dakota disaster contract regarding winter storm Atlas grant reimbursements. And we'll go to Pauline Sumption, our finance officer, for explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Tuesday, we had a meeting in Lead with the FEMA reps, uh, both the federal and the state, uh, representation. And we had to actually submit the application along with information for the FEMA reimbursement. So I apologize that this is after the fact, but it was required to be, um, delivered at that time. I didn't think that you guys would not approve it considering, um, how much money we were looking at.
Motion by Scott, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Pauline, for your hard work on this. Item number, uh, we are now on consent, uh, public hearing, uh, items, items ninety-eight through one oh seven. I do have one speaker request form. Craig Sittig of sixteen seventeen Green Meadows Drive, speaking on item one oh six. Good evening, Craig, and thank you for your patience.
I appreciate you, uh, I guess tolerating me or, uh, allowing me to speak. Uh, I also apologize. I guess I was underdressed, uh, between jobs right now, so, uh, I, I, I guess I come to you, um, one of my rental properties, um, I bought, originally bought the property in oh four. I don't know if anybody has ever bought a rental property, but when, when you, when you apply for the loan, one of the things is, uh, either gonna say that you're gonna live there, gonna use it as a rental. And from that point, it's always been a rental. I guess the reason I'm here is, uh, is the last Saturday, I got a certified letter, I guess. In Sept, there are on two occasions, I guess there was two notices sent out. One in August, I think, and one in September. I guess it was a citizen complaint about, uh, uh, tree branches or something overgrown into the, into the alleys or something like that. And I, I, I spoke to Clayton at, uh, this, I guess it's escaped to me now, but, uh, I, I spoke to Clayton, and he said that, uh, they, they send out notices, you know, which I, I've dealt with before, um, on any issue on any of my properties. And allowed, you know, the, generally speaking, you know, given on, uh, a certain deadline to get the problem resolved. Well, I, I don't live there. As you said, my address is in Piedmont. I guess my heartburn is, is the notices were sent to this property. And for whatever reason, the tenants threw it away, shredded it, whatever. And now all of a sudden, I have a thousand dollar easement or assessment, uh, potentially going against this property, so. I guess that's why I'm here and just, I wanted to voice my concern, my.
Thank you very much, Craig. And we'll be coming to that item in just a moment. Would you not have any additional speaker request forms on ninety-eight through one oh seven? Have I missed anyone? Seeing none, public comment on these items is now, uh, closed. We are on consent, public hearing, items ninety-eight through one oh six. Would anyone like to remove items ninety-eight through one, uh, any of these items for separate consideration? Item one oh six. Okay, we'll remove one oh six. We have a motion to approve ninety-eight through one oh five. Motion by Laurenti, second by, by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number one oh six. Richie, would you read this in the record for us?
Be happy to, Mayor. Item, uh, one oh six is Resolution Number two thousand thirteen dash one oh three B, leveling, uh, assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property, and I move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Scott. Any discussion? Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on behalf of the, uh, citizen that came forward on this rental property, may I ask a question of Pauline Sumption, please?
You may.
Pauline, I just basically asking a clarification question for, um, I don't want to mispronounce his name, Mr. Sittig. The assessment roller, those notices are mailed based on the county's record, not the city's record. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are required by state statute to go off of the record, um, that the county holds with that mailing address.
So, Mr. Sittig, I just wanted that clarification. Basically, the, the notices, in order to get your address changed, those notice, that address is used for the, the change of assessment or assessment change or tax notices or anything. So if it, as, as you stated, you know, owned by the bank or the bank holds a note on it, the bank is most likely paying the ta, you may not be getting those things. But you might want to check with the county and, and get your address updated on that rental property so that you are receiving the, the, the mailings that are sent out based on that property address of record. Please, go ahead and step forward.
I did go down to the equalization office today, and I, and I, I checked my, my rental properties to make sure that everything was getting sent to the Piedmont address. I, I just don't understand the, the break in the system, because like I said, when I, when I first bought this, it was an investment property. And I think it was rented out for like two years, and then all of a sudden, I get a notice from the city saying that, or the county saying that, uh, because it wasn't owner occupied, I was losing owner occupied status. Like I said, I was bought, it was bought as a rental. Um, and then, uh.
Somehow the address got changed.
Right. And, uh, again, I talked to, uh, I think it's Chris at, uh, Equalization this morning, and I changed the address. So in the future, the, the, the mailing cards would get sent to my house to give me an opportunity to fix it. It just, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Bonnie Peterson. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is for approval of item one oh six. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number one oh seven. Chad, can you read this into the agenda for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number one oh seven is Rapid City Liquor License Renewal for Quaker State. Excuse me. QSL Rapid City LLC Dealing Businesses, Quaker State Steak and Lube, thirty-three thirteen Mall Drive for retail liquor license. And yield the floor.
Need a mo, motion for approval with stipulations? Would someone like to offer a motion?
Let's move.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion by Wright and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? On, and this is a motion to approve with stipulations, correct? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, one oh eight. Billis, Pauline.
We do have three additions to the bill list that was attached. The first one is to Hills Materials Company, one, for one thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars. Second is to RCS Construction, an amount of six thousand forty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. And the third one is to.
And the third one is to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Inc., an amount of one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents, bringing the new total to nine million, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy cents.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Laurenti. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Scott, second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Have a good evening, everyone. It's eight forty and we are adjourned.